Welcome everybody to tonight's meeting. So we'll go ahead and get started with Mr. DiVillio doing the prayer. And then we'll do the publication of the flag. Could everybody stand please?
Dear Heavenly Father, we give you thanks and praise. Thank you for the food while we recognize those who go hungry. We thank you for good friends while we recognize those who struggle with loneliness. We thank you for our health while we remember those who we have lost this year. We thank you for gainful employment while we see businesses struggle around us to fill vacancies. And lastly, we thank you for this holiday season as a reminder of our faith in one another, in our community, and in you. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. DiVillio. That was great, appreciate it. I want to welcome everybody tonight. So let's start off with the agenda, the agenda of November 23rd. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none, the Chair moves that the agenda be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, let's move down to the minutes for October 26th and November 9th. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes? Okay, council has none. So the minutes, so hearing none, the Chair moves that the minutes be accepted by unanimous consent. Okay. So let's go to dispersments, dispersments for November 16th and November 23rd. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the dispersment? Okay. Hearing none, the Chair moves that the dispersments be accepted by unanimous consent. Thank you, council. Okay, so let's move on for our first on the agenda tonight. An update from the Maryland Environmental Service, 10-4. Can you guys come on up? That'd be great. You can have your right-hand person come up too if you want.
Come on Gary.
Yeah, don't forget, yeah, you gotta be up here now.
Yeah, he's better looking.
Yeah.
And younger. And the future.
How you guys doing?
We're doing great.
Good, good, good.
So last time I was here, I was the acting managing director, so I got a job, so.
All right.
Give it six months and then clap.
It was at council recommendation.
It was.
Yeah, now that's what it was.
So anyway, thank you for having us.
Yeah.
Here tonight. The first couple slides, I'm just gonna blow through. I've heard them a thousand times. It's, you know, what about the partnership?
Yeah, no problem, no problem. I'll give you 10 minutes.
Who or what is MES?
Okay.
For those that don't know, well, if you advance a slide one, we'll get started on it.
Your, your.
Oh, here.
There you go.
I got you.
There you go. We're waiting for some.
We'll catch up.
I'm up a certain age, so, you know, internet stuff, I'll leave it to the young guy.
I agree.
So the Maryland Environmental Service is an independent state agency. We've had that reinforced over the last year in terms of our status, but we are an independent state agency. We're not a private entity. The official definition of us is that we are a not-for-profit corporation entirely owned by the state of Maryland. We are not, we're a fee-for-service, we are not a appropriated state agency, we're not in the state pension program as employees, but we're the state in every other way.
Excuse me one minute, Tim. I just wanted to make sure, I forgot to say that Mr. Wisher is on the phone. Pete, can you hear us okay? Pete, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you, Pete, appreciate it. Sorry about that, Tim.
No problem. So we are, we are in effect a utility. We offer water and wastewater services, environmental service support, and waste, solid waste management support. So there are three groups, Detective Environmental Service, the Water and Wastewater Group. Actually, there are four, we split one up, the dredging group, and then the waste, solid waste group. So we can move to the next slide. So in the 1990s, the three counties, it was Caroline, Talbot, and Queen Anne's, got together and worked on a regional plan to provide solid waste management services for the three counties. Later Kent County joined, so it became a four-county partnership to provide solid waste management services for an 80-year period. They brought on Maryland Environmental Service as a partner, and the first solid waste management facility that was constructed, because it can be any type of facility, as long as it addresses the solid waste management needs of the four counties, was a landfill. And that landfill was the Midshore One landfill, and it was Talbot County that hosted, as you all know. And that landfill operated successfully for 20 years and has now been closed. And we've talked about it before, there is some excess capacity there that forever, whatever reason, down the road, the county feels that it would need that space, it's there. The type of cap that we used is a, it's not a, it's permanent in terms of closure, but it can be easily removed. It's an exposed geomembrin cap. So as I said, we were, the Midshore One landfill was the first regional landfill. We also operate a homeowner drop-off site and a transfer station at that site. The transfer station operations and the homeowner drop-off operation are funded by Talbot County, and a transfer fee on waste transferred to Midshore Two. So those two things fund the transfer operations and the homeowner drop-off site. The landfill itself, the closed landfill, still needs to be monitored and maintained. That is, that cost is, comes out of the Midshore, MES Midshore operations, as well as the maintenance on the old Eastern landfill. So the overall operation since the last time we met, there were 21,865 tons of solid waste received. There were 1,523 tons of yard waste. HODO, or homeowner drop-off, you know, kind of a weird acronym, isn't it? HODO, almost hobo, right? HODO usage is 14,000 customers, that's 500 tons of waste received, that's about 70 pounds of solid waste per person. And then, of course, they sell punch cards there, and so there were 29 $5, 673 $10, and 1,231 $20 tickets sold, which proves that the residents of Talbot County know a deal when they see it. They go for the 20, get more use out of it. So the transfer station operations, as I said, was it 14,000? No, how many times again?
21,000, roughly.
21,000 times, so that was a relatively flat period over period, but up significantly over the third, three-year period. A whole lot of factors involved, obviously there's population growth involved in that. We did see an uptick in the last year because of COVID, people were home, they were cleaning out their garages, whatever they were doing, they were throwing a lot of stuff away. We saw an uptick in traffic at the transfer station there. One of the things that we've done in the last, in this last quarter is we've added some signage to the transfer station to increase customer awareness, safety. There's, there's removing vehicles in and out of that transfer station. There's always a concern that somebody could get hurt, we wanted to raise awareness. We do have folks that are spotters that help the residents that come into the transfer station. We do have a policy and training regarding safety and particularly working around folks, but it is a concern of ours, we want to keep everybody safe at that site, and so we've added some signage there. That was Gary's idea. And we bought, since then, we bought an excavator loading scale. You want to know how in the heck does that maximize waste hauling efficiency? Well, it allows us to load out at the full legal load weight. So we, rather than guessing how many buckets and then wait till we get to the scales over, across the way, we can, we can load off the excavator. And it reduces loads overall. Go ahead. Part of our requirement at the landfill is post-closure care. This is a picture of, of a crew that are repairing the liner that is there on the, on the cap. It does have wear over the, over the time each year, so every year we come through, do an inspection, solid inspection with MDE. And any slight tears or repairs that are needed, we make those repairs, and we have a contract in place for that. And it just maintains the integrity of the closure cap.
How many acres does that cap cover?
It's about 60 acres up there.
That's a lot to inspect.
It's a lot of plastic. It's a big, it's a big slip and slide. Get out there when the rain comes down, the water will come off that. We had to improve the, the stormwater controls there when we built the cap system because of the amount of water that comes off that cap. And yeah, we should make it a slip and slide.
So what is, I mean, that's a good point, I never thought about that, you're right. I mean, where does all that water trench into?
It goes to, there's a Leachate Pond, or not Leachate Pond, I'm sorry, bad choice of words, isn't it?
Stormwater pond. Stormwater pond, right.
There that evaporation and infiltration.
Okay. Now, and I will say, you know, your, your crew, you know, I've dropped off things there as far as safety-wise, the guys you have working there are very safety-conscious, you know, they tell you where to park, you know, they, they tell you what bay to come into when someone else is pulling out, so I've never had a problem dropping stuff off there or even, even seen a close call. I think the guys do a really good job of letting you know where to go, when to come in, and who's pulling out, and things like that. So they're really good about directing traffic at that transfer site. I just wanted to say that.
Well, thank you.
Great, yes, thank you.
So you mentioned the stormwater, it's, it's not impacted stormwater, meaning it doesn't come in contact with trash. It's a, it's a plastic surface, so it's, it's stormwater, rainwater.
Yeah, but if you've got 60 acres of water moved, that's a lot of water.
It's tough to see when it, when it really rains.
I bet it is.
Next slide. Again, we've already covered this. We also have a landfill gas system out there. We're currently flaring the gas. We were, at one point, supplying methane to Eastern Utilities to generate electricity. We're now, over 10 years post-closure, the amount of gas is starting to trail off, amount of gas produced is starting to trail off, and Eastern Utilities has elected to discontinue the, the use of that generator.
So what will you do with that available energy?
So it is.
Eastern Utilities isn't taking.
It's flared off, so it's burned off, but you're destroying carbon when you're doing that. So if you're looking from a carbon impact, it's destroying that carbon. And in fact, part of the costs that we, or part of the program that we have for carbon credits, we get carbon credits for that flaring operation, we put back into the maintenance.
Right, but if it generates electricity, why wouldn't?
Well, it's, the quality and the quantity of gas is no longer sufficient to power a 1 megawatt generator that's there consistently, without a lot, without a lot of effort and maintenance on the part of Eastern Utilities. It became, was not cost-effective for them to continue that operation, to continue maintaining it. It required a manned operation, there's a lot of tuning that had to be done, a lot of variations because of the quantity of gas, depending on the time of year. In the wintertime, the pressure differentials would reduce the quality, the quantity of gas available for, for the generator, picks it up again in the summertime. It just became too much of a dynamic, and it wasn't cost-effective for them. So we've moved to flaring, it was always a flaring operation.
That, I assume, generated a little bit of revenue either for the county or for MES, didn't it?
We are doing that through the carbon credit, we get carbon credits for that, right.
Thank you.
How much was it this year, Gary?
46,000.
Yeah, there you go.
Yep.
So I've done this slide. And then we use that, that goes towards the closure care, so it stays with the operation. Any more questions on that? Good questions. We want to make energy when we can, we will do the same when we get to Midshore Two, and we'll generate, attempt it, if it works for us, attempt to generate electricity or some, some use of that gas. Gary's a young guy, he's got all kinds of ideas, he wants to compress it and powder vehicles and all kinds of stuff, but we'll let him, we'll let him keep working at that. But we do want to use, beneficially reuse that gas while we can. We're getting to the point where we need to start thinking about that at Midshore Two. So anyway, Midshore Two Solid Waste Facility is over in Ridgely. This is one of the management units that we use to service, that we use for servicing Talbot County. So there we had 72,007 tons. Brush was 2,000 tons, scrap tires, 24 tons, mattresses recycled, 31 tons, and there's 1,077 tons, the homeowner drop-off facility. All landfilling operations are occurring in Cell Three, which opened in 2020. And the completion timeline for land, for the landfill gas system, I just talked about, we're now constructed to the point where we can put in a central collection facility. We've been building it all along, but we need to put in the, the main collection facility, and that is scheduled for December 2021. Design.
Design.
Design. The actual construction piece will be next, next, in the next fiscal year. So the budgets are being developed for the Midshore Regional Facilities. We do share that with the counties, obviously, we have an agreement with all four counties, we share the overall Midshore budgets with the counties, as we do with Talbot County when we, at the end of the year, when we're moving into the new fiscal year. We do expect a slight increase in tipping fees next fiscal year, and there's a reason for that. We are in a compressed timeline now for completion, or for the, the end of the 20-year period for Midshore Two. We are trying to project forward now what other capital costs we're going to have between now and the end of that, of the closure for Midshore Two. But based on where we are in the schedule, we, we don't expect that we'll be able to successfully do a bond offering for that because of the time involved, so we're gonna have to be, that'll have to be cashed. So we'll have to accrue for that remaining construction, that has to be done at the landfill, we might need one more cell to get us through to the end.
I'm sorry, the increase in, in the tip fee will help offset that?
Or part of the accrual for that, that cash, that, the construction cost for that remaining cell.
So does that?
And then any other capital we have to expend, which is equipment mostly at this point, between now and the end of the term.
So should citizens in the four counties expect a little bit of an increase in their trash collection?
That depends, it all depends on how the, because that's a competitive market, right? So that doesn't always necessarily translate directly to a cost increase to the citizens because they're competitive and they need to, you know, the number of firms are out there offering subscription collection services, need to compete.
I guess I meant more than municipalities.
The municipalities, yes, will probably have a slight increase. I don't know how that'll translate to how they handle their, because basically you're raising your cost through your homeowner drop-off. No, it's through the homeowner drop-off.
Well, I meant.
And your property taxes.
Yeah, so for example, the town of Eastern is collecting trash, and they, you know, they get that through the property taxes, and so it's possible, I guess, if the tipping fees go up, they would possibly have to raise their taxes to pay for that. But it's up to them?
That I can't, that I can't answer, but we're not talking about $5 or $6 a ton, we're talking about a slight increase in tipping fees.
Thank you.
And again, that is just to offset the, what we expect to be the additional cash outlay we'll need between now and the end of the, of the current Midshore Two landfill life.
Which is 21?
2030.
2030.
Sounds a ways off, but it's not really.
It's not.
I just had a birthday, and I don't, I don't like that stuff either, so.
Happy belated birthday to you.
It's getting closer to that wall on the other end, so. Next one. So Midshore Three, so that's the next phase, and that's in Queen Anne's County, scheduled to be in Queen Anne's County. We have developed a multi-phase permitting process, and it takes, we're figuring about seven years at this point, used to be thinking was about 10, but this site is next to an existing landfill, we might be able to accelerate the time on that a little bit, so seven or eight years, we're right where we need to be. The county is currently evaluating the draft application prior to submitting that to MDE. And that'll start that ball rolling on the permitting process for that, for that new landfill.
And Tim, I know I've asked this question before, but I'll ask it again for the record. Should, should Midshore Two come 2029 and be at 85% of capacity, could it be extended past 2030?
Sure, that would require a, you know, an agreement of the four counties, and particularly an agreement between Caroline County and MES.
Well, I think you and I bounce back and forth between who asks that question every quarter. What was the, I didn't think the projection was that they were going to get close to 85%.
That's, that was generous, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to be a lot less.
Probably close to 65, 70%.
Right.
Capacity, so we could go another 15 years, 15, 20 years.
Approximately, end of the early 2040s.
It really depends, it's a crapshoot, because you really don't know what population projections are going to be, and there's all kinds of movement on, you know, reducing standard responsibility, our producer responsibility, single-use plastics, multi-use, you know, materials, all kinds of changes in terms of how we generate solid waste, and they're hard to predict.
Well, and also whether.
But, but we know 15 years at this point.
But legislatively, they may not allow the opening of a new landfill if there's capacity in an existing landfill.
That was, yep, that was a concern at one point, under Governor Hogan, that was reversed. Who knows? Who knows?
We have an election next year.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. For those that are hovering on the political appointee side of things, yeah, we're very well aware that there's an election next year.
And I think all the counties came together, I'm going back five-plus years ago to talk about recycling efforts as well, and how to work together for recycling, make sure that we were hitting, I forgot what, what the metric was regarding the, the number of tons you had to recycle per year. So you're probably seeing less material coming into the landfill because it may be, it's being diverted into the recycling bin. So, you know, I think that if you're, if you know projected out that 65% capacity is where you're going to probably end up somewhere in 2030 for Region Two, that those discussions may be happening sooner than later, as far as.
We are having discussions, we have, we have quarterly meetings with each, with the administrators, we have, in fact, it was a rather robust discussion at the last administrator's meeting. So we're not shying away from it, we have asked. Our position is, is that we have an 80-year agreement with the four counties, and the agreement says that a landfill will be open for 20 years, and we will, and we're prepared to close this landfill at the end of the term. There are advantages to extending, that's something that, that will need to be decided upon by the Caroline County, they're an independent county, they're sovereign, it's their decision to make in terms of what happens within their borders. But it'll, it'll be a continued discussion, continuing discussion. I don't think anything's going to happen until after that election, in terms of any real discussion.
Well, I know it costs Talbot County a lot more to, to, you know, after, when we were receiving, it was more cost-effective. Once it closed, I remember the first couple of budget years after that, and the subsidy that goes into the homeowner drop-off, when you're selling $20 punch cards, it doesn't begin to cover the expense of transferring it to another place. So, yeah, I think we'd be happy to have a little conversation to let the, you know, the county who's thinking about letting it go to have reality check of what it may end up, end up costing them, and then in turn their citizens, when, when you then have to transfer to another landfill, it's expensive.
Yes, we understand that, and we, we do everything we can to be as competitive and as cost-effective as we can. We're, it's not only the impact issue, but we have a lot of private haulers that come into the landfill that are not required to do so, they do so because it makes sense for them economically, right? So we have to be really aware of what those prices are, we try to, to be as competitive as we can. In fact, this is a, if we do have an increase, and we haven't decided that entirely yet, we have to get through this year, we do a flyover, we look at what the, where we sit in terms of volume, we make our projections going forward in terms of where we think we're going to be, what we need to build, and then we'll, we'll come to that decision. But we haven't had an increase in what.
This will be the, the first increase in five years, if it happens, next fiscal year.
Right. We're, we're very aware of it, we, we can't drive away volume from the landfill because that just exasperates the problem in terms of, of cash flow. So we're very aware of it. We, so we're not your grandfather's state agency, we have solid private sector experience in terms of how to, you know, manage a facility competitively, and we do so. All right, we're winding down here, the recycling program, which you just talked about, is packed. So we have an agreement with Talbot County and MES for recycling management services, and that's set to expire June 30th, 2022. We've already started drafting what the new agreement will look like, it, it falls in line with the other counties as well, and we'll be presenting that for, for review soon. That's up to Gary, so he'll tell you what his deadline is on it.
April.
April. And I didn't properly introduce Gary Laseco, Gary is, he's the president of Talbot County. He is our project manager for the Upper Eastern Shore. He also has now the, our ECI cogeneration facility operations in Princess Anne, so he's a busy guy. But anyway, this is Gary Laseco, and we're happy to have him. So mixed metal and plastic, there was 293 tons collected, mixed papers, 371 tons, cardboard's 500 tons, glass 513, for a total of 1,677 tons of recycling collected in that timeframe, that April through September timeframe. Pricing is up dramatically. For one thing, this is clean material, it's, it's separated at the, at the collection point, so it tends to be very clean, and it's, it's a higher value material in its own right. And the market right now is crazy, the recycling market is up, it is a, you're subject to a whipsaw effect in this market, it's, it's ruined a many a man, as the old song says, for people that are entirely in recycling, because it does move up and down, it's hard to predict, it's a commodity market. But it's up now, and we're happy for that. That money goes back into subsidize a recycling collection, it's a separate, separately accounted for. In fact, we just submitted the, the results last year to the counties for that, for that program. Next. So used oil, we, we work with Maryland Department of Environment all across the state to collect used oil. There are six used oil collection sites in the county, people still do change their own oil, they still do use those facilities, and we still collect it. That material is collected and recycled, actually it's returned to, as base lube, so the company that collects it now has a refinery, they refine it, turn it back into oil for your car, base lube. Contract Two 21405 was executed between MES and Talbot County to remove improperly discarded waste or recyclables from the recycling sites. People tend to drop trash at these sites. In particular, Talbot County has seen some movement in terms of where we have these facilities set up because of the trash concerns, people have asked us to, to move. The county is very much aware of it, they've asked us to help in terms of cleaning their sites up, and we have a, a contract in place for that. We, we submitted a contract renewal request in November, this month, to look at that. Last but not least, we participated this year again, as we do every year, in the Waterfowl Festival, and we collected 300 pounds of recyclable materials, which is primarily mixed plastic, over those plastic beer cups. Anyway, it was, it was a fun time by all, apparently, and, and we were happy to provide the recycling services for that. That's it.
Okay, that's great.
Did I take more than 10 minutes? I'm sorry.
No, no problem, no problem. Can I tell them anything else? Good, okay. Thank you, Tim, you and Gary did a good job, I appreciate the update.
Thanks, man.
Thank you.
Okay, next, next up, an update for the Talbot Soil Conservation District to request an increase for erosion and settlement control fees, and guys, come on up. Mr. Smith, Mr. Swain, come on up. So Mr. Smith, Mr. Swain, come on up.
Good evening.
Mr. Smith is the district manager. Mr. Swain's in charge of the Talbot Soil Conservation.
Thank you.
How you doing, guys?
Good.
Good.
Thanks for having us.
Yeah, no problem.
Go for it.
Okay. So hopefully everyone's received the letter dated November 17th that we've submitted. So a little bit of background, Soil Conservation, the Talbot Soil Conservation District was formed in 1958. We are a quasi-governmental agency with certain political powers. So one of them is to review and approve erosion and sediment control plans. That's just one of the functions that the district provides to the county residents. This program started in 1992 and ever since 1992, we've had to come back in front of the county, John in particular, since he's been here since 1989.
Correct.
And so he's been around since the beginning. So we've been coming back roughly seven to eight years and taking a look at where we are with our fees, our, our structure and see if they're in line with the current economic market and what we're able to provide with those fees. So the district itself does not receive a county budget. So we use these fees for district activities, for our education outreach to schools, to our landowners, we provide technical assistance in the form of surveys and designs for a wide variety of problems that exist on their properties. So these, these fees were last looked at in 2014 and that's the process. So we bring them in front of the council, we've already discussed them at length during our monthly board meetings. We think these are in line with the neighboring counties and we think these will help offset some of the responsibilities that we have to try to promote soil conservation within Talbot County. So if you'd like, we can go through some of them or if you have any general questions on the background of why we're here? If I missed anything?
Mr. Callahan?
Yes, yes, Mr. Vice President.
I had the privilege of going over the tour with the agency, with the Soil Conservation District and got to look at a number of the projects that, that they have engineered and financed and it's, it's pretty impressive what they're doing and my understanding in that tour was they are flooded with applications. This is a, this is a program that's very much in demand by, by Talbot County farmers and I, I think that we should, I think we should support this request.
Okay. Thank you.
So, so just to be, appreciate that, Councilman. The, the tour that we looked at, we looked at some agro-cultural practices in the field. This is, this is kind of along the same lines but a little bit different. So these are erosion and sediment control plans for any activity, construction activity within the county. So if you, essentially if you disturb more than 5,000 square feet, you're going to be required to have an approved erosion and sediment control plan.
Non-ag, correct.
Non-ag, correct. So that's non-ag, that's any type of construction within the county. So there's, there's a fee structure, which is the, one on the second page of the letter that was provided, has our current, current structure, you know, which we have a standard plan, which is essentially a, a small home on, on a smaller lot, less than two acres. An engineer plan is those full plans that provide, that requires a little bit more design and engineering along with the stormwater component. We have forest harvest plans, that's whenever there's any forest logging or thinning activity, we require an approved erosion and sediment control plan. Obviously, we have quite a few of these shoreline plans, which are anywhere from the typical riprap to living shorelines, we approve and review all those plans as well. An agricultural plan, that's kind of a, typically meant for a barn or some type of facility to support an ag operation. And then we have a town municipality and a county plan, that's typically for anything, obviously, that's submitted as the, when the town or county is the applicant on a project, a revision and a renewal. So those are what's typically in our, that's what's in our approved structure right now. Throughout the schedule, we're looking at an increase in an application fee, moving from 50 to 100. And then you can see the other fees and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. These are, these are kind of just a real quick, these are more in line based on our internal analysis of what we project for the next, you know, next few years. So we don't have to come back again for another eight years, hopefully, but we, we're not sure where we're going to be, but this will be helping out our activities.
That sounds, that sounds good. Uh-oh. Okay, Council. Do we have any questions, Council?
So the, the only question that I had, excuse me, sorry, if you could just clarify a little bit on the one increase to, from a flat $150 per project to a $100 acre review fee for the government, for municipalities, which seems in line, you, you show that they're between 75 to 300 an acre.
Correct.
But that, that could get substantial quick, but just-
Sure. So the way our, our review fee system works right now, it's on a per-acre basis and we've seen quite a few, an increase in county projects, town projects, which are quite large and take up a lot of time. And so we're just trying to offset the cost of those projects and so we're offering a reduced rate instead of the full 225 per acre, just at least 100. And that should typically, we're at, most projects are under an acre, so we're looking at 150 flat to go up to a $200 for the majority of the projects. That's sidewalks and, and, you know, think simple things in town, smaller projects. But they do, they take up quite a bit of time and that's why we're trying to kind of offset that.
Sure. Yeah, I can only imagine, there's got to be a lot more involved with municipality than when it's a farmer trying to-
Absolutely.
Do the right thing.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
So with, with that one, that's the engineering plan, correct, Sean?
Yes, sir.
So right now is that your application fee right now for that is $50, you're asking to increase that to $100?
Yes, sir.
$50 increase. The review fee, as it currently stands, is 175 per acre.
Correct.
And you're talking about taking that up another $50 to, to 225 per acre, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So the majority of our applicants are the one acre or less.
Right.
So we're typically at the 225. So we're going to see an increase up to 325. It's going to be probably 90% of the applications that we see at our office.
Is there a, a right to notice during a period for any increase in fees or are you required to send out notice of increase or how does that, how is the public made aware of any increase? You're not in our state, but in our county budget, so, you know, we, we have budget hearings, people, constituents come to us and hear our budget meetings, but how are the people that you're dealing with here in the county made aware of your fee increases?
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe there's a formal process in place. I don't think there's a requirement to let them know of the timeframe when this would be enacted. I'm, I'm not positive.
So you're not required to put anything in any local papers or anything of that nature?
I believe we're going to. I believe we're going to-
But you're not required to.
Correct. We have a list of developers that we work with on a consistent basis. Most of the engineering firms in town who primarily handle a majority of these requests. So we'll have a conversation with them to let them know of our-
Well, will this schedule be printed up that we're looking at here? I was going, I was going to ask you to read each increase, but I, I won't have you do that for the sake of time. But will, will the schedule that we're looking at, the council, will this schedule be also placed in, in local papers?
It will be published on our website and we can definitely take that into consideration and put something out.
I think that'd be a good idea. I, I just think the public should have a right to, of notice-
Sure.
Of, of the fee increase. I mean, you may not be under any type of state requirement to do so, but just for clear and for a clear disclosure of the increase. I mean, again, this is not within the county's purview per se as far as the fees, but I think the public should be made aware.
It's, it's a fairly extensive update from 2014, absolutely.
Okay. Yes, it is.
From where we went from the 20, or from 2008 to 14, it was, was one fee increase and we're kind of looking at the whole structure.
And they all may be justifiable. I mean, I'm not saying that they aren't, but I think this, just make sure the public is made aware.
Absolutely.
Okay. Ms. Price, you okay?
Good.
Okay. Let's see. Is there a motion in a second to approve the-
I'm sorry, just a-
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So the council would do this by, there would be another hearing in which you would introduce the appropriate document to approve this, so under state law, you don't just, you can't just make a motion to-
Oh, okay. Okay, so we'll-
It was done by resolution previously.
Historically, it was done by hand, but the last time it was done by resolution. It could be either. I don't think there was anything driving the number of resolutions.
There was, there was a request made by a member of council to have a numbered resolution, but previously it was done by council vote, public vote.
Okay.
The only thing I had was, if you could just share when these would take effect for council.
To make things easier on our, on our accounting would be nice for January 1st, is when we'd like to have these.
Okay. Jack, did you have to worry, Mark?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm going to take your word on that public notice, right?
Take her.
Okay, thank you.
Good. I got my, my boss here with me.
Mrs. Callahan, I, I'll, I'll make the motion that you're seeking for council to approve the fee increases as set forth by Mr. Smith, district manager.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pack?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Price, I appreciate it. Madam Secretary, I got a motion in a second, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay, guys. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
We'll look for it.
Thank you for having us.
Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Let's move on to introduction of a new resolution. At this time, I'll ask Madam Secretary to read the resolution into the record, please.
A resolution to adopt a redistricting plan for Board of Education election districts pursuant to Section 312A01 of the Education Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Thomas, could you help us then understand this resolution, please?
Yes, so under state law, with every decennial census, the county points a redistricting commission to redraw the election districts for the Board of Education members. We appoint a, a redistricting committee, in this case consists of four nominees from the Republican Central Committee, four nominees from the Democratic Central Committee, an ad-large member, and then they prepare proposed districts based on the decennial census information. And so this resolution is setting forth the, the districts that they proposed, which are largely the same as they currently are with a few slight modifications to, I think it's District One. One of the districts is under state law, one of, at least one of the districts is required to have a majority-
Minority majority.
Minority majority of over 18.
Okay. All right, great.
And that, that would accomplish that.
Okay. All right, then, thank, thank you. So let's, let's-
Go ahead.
Say, raise your hand, raise your hand if you would like to introduce the resolution.
I'm going to call out about Mr. Lesher.
Hey, Pete?
Are you raising your hand?
I will, I will join as a sponsor.
Okay, that's fine, fine. Okay. Madam Secretary, could you announce the resolution number, public hearing date and time, please?
This will be known as Resolution 312 and the public hearing will be on Tuesday, December 14th at 6:30 PM.
Okay, that's good. Okay. Did you hear that, Pete?
Did you say December 14th?
Yeah, at 6:30.
Well, how, don't, I think it's last time. Do we want to announce that or are we going to? We already have so many public hearings, do we want to do-
We have to get this done. It has to be-
Oh, that's true. That's true. This one should be easy.
Could you, could you repeat when the hearing will be?
Yeah, it's going to be December 14th at 6:30. Resolution 312.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay, that's, that's, okay, everybody good? Okay, we're going to move on to council elections of officers. So, so Mr. Thomas, will you, turn it over to you and walk through the process, please?
Sure. Do you want to wait for Councilmember Pack to come back?
Sure. We're all here.
So Mr. Thomas is going to explain the process to us. Mr. Pack?
So under Section 209 of the county charter, the council annually selects a president and a vice president among its members. And this is my first time doing this, but my understanding of the process is you will each do, cast a ballot for president and I will tally up the ballots and announce the president and we'll do the same process for the vice president. Mr. Lesher gave his notice of his intent to cast an absentee ballot and I have his sealed ballots for, for each. And Ms. Morris is going to distribute to each of you the ballots for council president Congratulations, Council President Callahan.
Thank you, Council, I appreciate it. Yep. Thank you, Pete. Did you hear that, Pete?
I did, thank you very much.
Yep.
Congratulations, Mr. Callahan.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Council Vice President Lesher.
Congratulations, Pete.
Thanks, you all, very much, thank you, Council.
What happened? We don't show up.
Yeah. Okay, Council, let's go to county manager's floor.
Good evening, Mr. Council President, members of the council. I have several items for you this evening. The first one are board and committee appointments and the first one is recommending your appointment to the Weed Control Committee, Mr. Levin Schwanger Jr.
So move.
Second.
Madam Secretary, could you call the roll?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
The next item I have is a request from the Roads Department to purchase a screener for use at the repurposing facility. As you read your agenda packet, the Roads Department's requesting council approval of purchase of 2016- As you read your agenda packet, the Roads Department is requesting council approval to purchase a 2016 power screen Warrior 800 trap-mounted screen from Aggregates Screens and Crushers for a price of $115,000. This is a piece of equipment that has been demonstrated, has been on site, and you're reading your packet and a memo from your Roads Superintendent that he strongly recommends that you authorize the purchase of this piece of equipment.
And it's, it's in the budget?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. It, it, the money is in the budget that you appropriated to the enterprise fund for repurposing, so, yeah.
I'm gonna make this motion just because I like the name of it. A 2016 power screener Warrior Warrior 800.
And I'll second it because it's used. We're getting a deal.
Okay, Madam Secretary, could you call the roll?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay, the next item I have is recommendation, recommendation award bid 2112. This is a request for proposal for the removal of county-owned Confederate monument from the Talbot County Courthouse Green, 11 North Washington Street, Eastern Maryland, Talbot County. Uh, in, in follow-up to your direction given by the majority of council September 14th, 2021, county staff were to issue an RFP for the relocation of the Talbot Boys Monument. The RFP was advertised and one bid was submitted. As you read in your agenda packet, I am requesting the award of bid 2112 to the sole bidder Stratified Incorporated, Incorporated out of Washington DC in the amount of $67,000, contingent upon project being fully funded by the Midshore Regional, uh, Midshore Community Foundation. No county funds are required and I have confirmed that the funds are in place to cover the request, uh, request tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Stamps.
Want to open that for discussion?
I'll make the motion before you take the discussion that we award the bid.
Well, hang on.
Oh, you can't hold on while I made the motion.
Well, I know, but we had some discussion, so let's, please not do this again.
You can discuss it after the motion is made.
Correct, and we want to talk about some flexibility. So before you jump the gun, there are some council members who are interested in some flexibility.
Procedurally, procedurally, procedurally.
Do it again, aren't you?
Procedurally, I can make the motion, discussion can take place after the motion is made. Second it. That's just procedure.
And I, I will second it, so it's open for discussion.
Now it's open for discussion.
We have some possibilities within the county to relocate the monument. Nobody's trying to keep it here anymore, okay? But there are people who would like it to stay in the county, and that needs to be given an opportunity. So all we're talking about here is to allow the county manager some flexibility, that if a location within the county or even possibly if it's not in the county within the state, rather than moving it to Virginia, comes available during the process, because the RFP will take some ti, a little bit of time, to allow the county manager some flexibility, that if a location is appropriate and the council chooses to do that, it just gives some flexibility. It does not stop this RFP process. It just allows it to, um, be moved elsewhere in the county rather than to Virginia if that opportunity presents itself in the next month or so.
Okay. Mr. Lesher?
Well, um, so I, I could support, uh, I could certainly support that flexibility to, to explore this. I'm, I don't feel that I'm optimistic. You know, we, we got, we got dropped these two proposals just this afternoon at the, at the last minute past the, the deadline that we requested, uh, so that this could be included in our council package for, for this evening. That was, that was irresponsible and unfortunate, uh, but here we are.
Right.
I would be, I, you know, I would be willing to give the opportunity to vet these as, as these options, as skeptical as I am of that, should the, should the council majority wish to, uh, to proceed that, in that direction.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Lesher. So, um, so are we putting a tone frame on that?
Um.
So, so I, I like the flexibility of the, um, resolution that we are going to stay open. We're, we're, we're gonna, so, so as of right now, okay, we, we're going to ask the contractor to hold tight.
Mr. Callahan, point of order. You have a motion and a second on the floor.
Okay.
That's what you have before you right now.
To, so, I'm just saying.
To accept, to accept this contract that's before you.
To go straight to Virginia with no opportunity.
To accept this contract that's before you.
So you're.
Mr. President?
Yes, yes, sir.
If I could clarify.
Yes.
I'm ready to, I'm ready to support the motion on the table. I would also be willing to support an amendment to this motion. If we proceed tonight, uh, then we provide some flexibility to negotiate, but providing we vote on this bid, on awarding this bid package tonight, I would be willing to amend that, uh, and leave the flexibility for, on, sort of amend the motion on the table and leave the flexibility for the staff to negotiate, uh, an alternate location as part of this bid package.
I would support that amendment.
I, I am not really interested in, in extending the deadline that's already passed for local individuals to come up with a solution. I'm, I'm disappointed in the two that came in after the deadline. I feel that it was a bit disingenuous when individuals say that there are locations and, and people that would take it without giving thought to their neighbors, their homeowners associations, and, and the, the idea of it being in a private place with public accessibility at all times. I, I don't see how extending the deadline will make anyone who has reservations of coming forward, as have been expressed, come forward any faster. That, we, we gave that opportunity, we were approached and told that many individuals who are willing to accept it are afraid to come forward and voice that. And to me, that, that doesn't show the full commitment to the community that they would be willing to do it. And so therefore, I'm prepared to make the hardest decision that I have made to date up here and move forward with this.
So I don't think anybody's talking about slowing down the process, but if in the next several weeks, something comes forward, and look, I can understand why someone might be a little hesitant to go public with it. This is a very divisive issue, and for someone to raise their hand and say, hey, I'll take it, you know, there might be people that say bad things about them. So I can certainly understand their hesitancy, given the divisive nature of this. I don't think anybody's talking about slowing down the process, but it's clear you have.
Ms. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Price, are you willing to move forward with this tonight, provided we give that flexibility to the staff?
Yes. So, but only with the amendment, and I think it's clear right now there.
We would not extend any deadlines. So we keep to the, the timetable, but as we, as we execute this, obviously the planning is, is going to need to take place first before the act. But, uh.
We're losing you, Mr. Lesher.
Let, let me, let me just.
I don't want to look.
Can you hear me, Pete?
We lost you a little bit, Pete. You might want to repeat those last two sentences.
Is he there? Pete, are you there?
Can you hear us, Pete? Can you hear us?
I, I, yes, I didn't catch what Laura said is the last.
Well, we lost your last couple of sentences.
Let, let me just say, Mr. Callahan, just as point of clarification, there's, there's nothing here, there's nothing here to amend, basically. You have a bid before you, 2112. If the council votes tonight to accept this bid, we move forward with the bid. Now, should something come in in between, um, today, in the time this bid is executed, there is nothing preventing this council from going back and re, and modifying the bid or even rejecting the bid, you know? There's nothing, there's nothing stopping the council from doing so. Am I correct if we want, if we wanted to go back and, and do, and?
That's, that's not what it says.
Unless you rewarded the bid, we're proceeding with the contract.
But could the, okay, let me say, could the bid be modified after the date?
Then why not give the flexibility now?
Well, that, that's, that's your flexibility. I'm just, I'm just pointing out, the bid can be modified.
That's what I was thinking about just now.
So you could, if you chose to modify your motion to award the bid to begin the removal planning process from the courthouse green and authorize county manager to negotiate the scope as to destination, um, you could direct me to do that. And we could come back, um, with the county attorney, uh, if the council so determines that another destination is appropriate, to amend the resolution that you had passed to reflect the new destination. And that negotiation, if you empower me to do that, county manager, we could do that. But, but again, if you vote to award the contract tonight, you begin the process of removal.
Which is why we should have had this discussion before you jumped in and made the motion so that we could have given it the flexibility, which I believe you have three council members who would like to have that flexibility. So, being that there are, it appears based on conversation that there are three members who would like the flexibility, Mr. Pack, are you willing to amend your motion?
I am not willing to amend the motion. The flexibility still stands there.
No, it doesn't. I don't think so. Does it can't, you just said if we vote to award the bid, that's where it goes. We don't have flexibility.
It moves forward, but that's not to say that you don't have the, don't, don't have the right to come back and.
I don't think that's what you just said.
It could be amended.
It could be amended.
It's not set in stone when you do that, but that is, becomes more cumbersome.
Of course. Why would you make it more difficult when it's very simple just to give the county manager flexibility to amend the location should one present itself shortly?
I would not want to put this on one individual's shoulders to come up with a local location and come back to the council.
No, we would still approve the location, but it just allows him to negotiate with the contractor.
Again, from, from, I don't care if it's two, three, or a dozen individuals who say that they want it and they want to put it in their yard of their townhouse community or something that just makes no sense. I don't see us getting into, to a bidding war.
It still would be up to us to choose that location. We would still be the ones who would vet that out.
And, and, and let me say this as well. I mean, there were individuals, instead of taking the time to come up and meet the deadline date, they chose to sue the council over the procedure.
That's one person.
And, well, I'm, that's my point of view. That's just, it's my time to give it. And they, they chose to sue the council over our procedure and our right to move the statue, instead of going about the fact of finding if they had such a local location and meeting our deadline. And that wasn't done. The deadline came and went.
Mr. Lesher, how would you amend this to allow flexibility? What, what, what would your, I'm not sure how we, we do that.
I, I think, I think I would, I would offer, uh, I would, I would suggest an amendment to the motion that is already on the table that simply said, uh, that, uh, staff is empowered to negotiate, uh, on that one article, on the, on the destination, uh, with the contract awarding. And that we would then, uh, we, we could amend, we could then further amend this bid, uh, based on, on those findings. It would necessarily get amended. This is simply, simply provides the, the space, the opportunity to do so. Is that, uh, Mr. Stamps, is that, uh?
So the only thing I would add to that is staff, you would give authority to staff to negotiate something for council's consideration. Council would have to make that decision. I would propose that it would be done, um, at the, at the meeting in December. Um, and again, that would be the opportunity to amend the res, you could direct the county attorney to amend the resolution if you chose to do so, but it's a council's decision.
And so at that time, each staff, based on what you learned between now and December 14th, staff either would or would not have a recommendation at that time for an amendment to the, a bid as already awarded.
Does somebody write all that down?
So right now, we, we have, we have been told there's a new location, right, right now?
No, no.
I'm getting texts right now that we're supposed to have a letter from a specific person that I don't have in my packet, and I'm not going to say the person's name, but.
What, what, what date did, Mr. Lesher?
Okay, all we want is some flexibility, so.
You have flexibility. They came and went. Yeah, well, we, we gave flexibility. We gave a deadline from last Friday. We did.
So you and Mr. DeVio want to go on the record that you would rather have this in Virginia than in an appropriate location here in Talbot County where the ancestors can at least go.
You made that vote a month ago.
Yeah, without a lot of info, with a lot of information missing that the preference is for it to stay in Talbot County. Look, we all know that it's moving.
There was flexibility.
We're not fighting the fact that it's moving.
There was flexibility given. First, first you guys argued that the procedure was wrong. Then you said Mr. DeVio was out of order. So we get, then we gave the flexibility of leaving it open till, till last Friday. Then that day came and went. What's going to be next?
Well, when somebody jumps.
Every month there's something different.
Yeah, when someone jumps and makes a motion before you can even have anybody else open their mouth to try something else because you had to be first so that we'd have to have this as an argument.
I'm here to be first. I just, point of order.
Because three of us would have made a motion to have flexibility. So I guess you called a vote. Let's see what happens.
You can still, listen, Ms. President of Mako, you can still amend a motion.
We're trying to.
A motion still can be amended.
We're trying to.
Even if it's made to the floor, procedurally, you could still amend a motion.
Didn't Mr. Lesher just do that?
So just because I made the motion, doesn't mean that it has to go forward unamended. You can still amend a motion.
You said we didn't need to. Now, Mr. Lesher, have you amended the motion? Did we lose him again?
Hey, Mr. Lesher, did, did you want, do you want to amend the motion that's on the floor now?
That, that, I think procedurally, that would be way to do it, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so you, so did anyone write his amendment down? Because you got to have the amendment before someone can second it.
Well, we've got, we've already got one on, on the floor, so we have.
Well, he, his amendment, he's making an amendment to the motion, okay? If the amendment is seconded, then you have a, a motion amended. Then you take a vote on that. So I'm just saying, what's his, what's his amendment?
Well, my notes say that, um, Mr. Lesher would allow flexibility at staff, to empower staff to negotiate. And then Mr. Stamps said for destination for council's consideration.
So his, his, his amendment is to, is to, is to amend the motion to allow staff, to empower the staff.
To negotiate.
To negotiate.
A location, a locations for council's consideration.
For council's consideration, okay. That's the amendment. You got that?
That's what I had.
Okay. That's the amendment. You made an amendment.
So, so I, I will, I, I, I offer that as an amendment now.
He's offering the amendment.
Yeah, which five minutes ago you said we didn't need to do that.
He's offering the amendment.
Yeah, you didn't want to allow, we need to make the amendment now.
He's offering the amendment.
Okay, he's made the amendment. I guess we take a vote?
He's offering the amendment.
Oh, you need a second.
Thank you. There is.
Here we go.
The amendment has been seconded. There's a discussion on the amendment.
So, and this is just for clarification, we would be entering into an agreement with this company, accepting this bid to relocate the statue while waiting for final approval on the location that it's being relocated to? Is that, or we would be?
Mr. Governor, the way I see it is that, is that without further clarification, this will go forward. However, if, uh, staff learns of viable options, it comes to us with a recommendation or a change to the location in December, we can at that point vote to amend this bid package.
Okay.
But what we would be voting on right now with, with this amendment simply provides that opportunity in December. If there's no staff recommendation, if none of these prove viable, it simply goes forward. If we do have compelling case, uh, for a change of location that comes to us in the form of a staff recommending, recommendation in December, then, then the council majority could go ahead and, and amend the, the bid with regard to the final destination.
Hey, Mr. Lesher, do you, I, I don't see where staff should be making that recommendation. It should be council making that recommendation.
Correct. They just need to bring us the locations.
They just need us to bring the information to us and that, then that us make the recommendation. Do you agree with that?
I can, I can support that.
By the first meeting in December.
So in the first meeting in December, we're essentially calling all interested parties to the room to go on public record to tell us who would like it and justify why for us to debate and decide.
Well, or, or just if we're having the December 21st meeting, we could have that week because we have. because we have such a busy calendar on the 14th. So, I would at least leave it open to the 21st.
No, 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 no. First meeting in December, no.
We already have like four public meetings.
This, this, this will take a minute because you're not going to get any bids, any changes.
Well, we've got some on the table now.
Viable.
So, we do, we do have some on the table, so...
But is that, is that how we're all seeing this play out? That this would then become an agenda item for the, for that meeting? I assume under county manager's report? And we would call up all interested parties to...
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to have them in advance.
I don't see us going that route. I think that we need to have these things in writing in advance.
Different than what we have now?
We need time for either council or staff, in supporting council, to vet these offers, to understand the, any particular advantages or disadvantages over the, over the existing offer. But we have, we have a perfectly viable offer on the table at Cross Keys. And, and we don't have to weigh any of these, but I do not see calling anybody up, this is a county, this will be a returning hand to report for modification of the bid. And we better have that information in time for us to vet it before that council meeting.
And I think that, because, you know, people might have some hesitancy, that any information that council is given on locations will be, will be treated privately. We're not going to go out and say, you know, so and so, and so, and so, and so, and so have all offered their land, which is why you would not bring them all up publicly and parade them out in front of people. That this would be considered something confidential so that we can consider it at least at first, you know, which ones are viable without...
Anybody who is so shy or thin-skinned about this should, should tip it off.
Thank you.
So, staff, staff's recommendation is if you were to have a proposal, we would need to take the work back on the proposal by the 6th of December to prepare council for the 15th, the 14th.
Well, wait, I thought we were talking about, since we have such a packed schedule on the 14th, to, to go to the 21st.
No, you were talking about that. We weren't talking about that.
I suggested it. And I'm seeing nods over there going, we have a very packed agenda on the 14th.
We, we do, but I suspect council would want to resolve this matter.
This is, this is another date that we're giving. We gave the last Friday, and then we're giving another one.
Mr. Pack?
Yes.
Would you, could, could you share a little bit of, I'm asking you, because this is such an important situation here, okay? Two, two weeks could make a difference on, on the location. So, would you, would you, would you, would you please be a little flexible?
Well, I, I think, I think this, we are being flexible, Mr. Callahan. The, the date, the date was last Friday, and now you're going from last Friday to now December the 6th. So, how many weeks is that as far as flexibility? Four weeks?
I'm, I'm asking for six.
Now, you're asking, come on, Mr. Callahan.
I'm just asking that, look, we all, we all got this stuff today, and we got...
We have nothing today. I mean, I mean...
We did get something today. We, we got, we got a, a location in, in Maryland, and we got a private citizen that wants it. So, so, so can, can we...
Well, again, I think...
Bear with me now, bear with me.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So, so, knowing that was the ninth hour, okay? Knowing it was the ninth hour, I'm, I'm just asking, can we just put this package together in the next several weeks? And if it's real, it'll happen. If not, we're going to move on to 21st.
But that, that, I think that today to 23rd...
I understand.
You don't think staff, in, in the matter of two, mind you, Thursday, Friday are holidays, you don't think staff has enough time to review this and get us, give us something by, by the 6th?
After 110, 200, whatever, how many years it's been, what is another week?
I just, I just, I just, if there's, if there's a location, I want to make sure that we vet the location. And it's, and the, the stuff that has come to us today, you know, there's two possibilities here. And I, and I can, I can tell you, I want to keep it here in Talbot County.
I know, well, we, we...
But one of the options isn't. One of them is in St. Mary's, right? Or Southern Maryland.
Yeah, I, I know.
Okay. Well, obviously, we would prefer Talbot County.
Right.
But if worst case...
So, there were two options that came in at the last hour, an hour before we went into closed session. One was on, in Southern Maryland, and another one is an individual who wants to put it in their yard. How do we pick which individual gets it?
It's up to us.
And there, there are others that have not come forward, and I would venture to say that after this conversation this evening, that those other people who had expressed an interest will now come forward if they're serious about it. Because now they know.
What, what on earth are they waiting for?
I, I echo that exact exhaustion because I, no, I am, and I'm taking this very seriously here. I am taking the, this delay, and, and for somebody to say that they're afraid to put their name out there to the public, that they would take a statue for perpetuity, I, I don't agree. You either need to stand up and say, yes, I will take care of this forever and make this accessible to the public, or you have to say disingenuously, I'm related to it and I think it looks best in my front yard. And I don't know how to pick that person out of any others.
Do you remember how certain council members have been treated over this whole issue?
I know exactly how I have been treated throughout this entire process.
Yes, both against it and for it, and you've changed your mind, and other people have changed their mind. It is not easy. People get attacked over this issue. So, please have a little compassion for people.
I have a lot of compassion, and I'm asking for you to have some compassion for me. We've gone through the process.
And nobody really wants it to go to Virginia except for you, Mr. DiVillo.
I don't want it to go to Virginia, but I have yet to find anything better.
So, give it a couple weeks. Give it a couple weeks.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Vice President.
One, I believe, I believe actually Mr. DiVillo has been persistent in his position from the start. Mr. DiVillo said from the start that he could not support moving the monument without having a suitable destination for it. So, I do not believe he's been inconsistent. It's just that the circumstances have changed because for a while we did not have that location. But let's, let's, I will set forth what I would advise is my criteria for, for changing the, the destination location. There are two attributes that I think the Cross Keys location has that, that another location would have to provide. One is that it is owned and operated by an organization that is organized for that purpose in perpetuity. In other words, there is no, the land will not be bought and sold by other organizations. It is, it is, it is owned by a preservation organization, and there is no prospect, no foreseeable prospect that that will change in, in any foreseeable timeline. So, there's elements of perpetuity here. You know, if this was a private landowner, the land could be sold in fennel. So, I don't see, I don't see a private landowner being a, a responsive prospect for this destination. Second is that there is an authenticity to this location. A lot of Talbot County boys bought into this location. People who are named on this monument. There's something that is true about that location. That authenticity of location, I think, is something that has a particular advantage. Now, perhaps there are other places that would, would meet, I'm, I'm sorry, and most important is that this location also ensures public access for the, in the future.
I agree with that.
If there are other locations perhaps that are closer, that could fulfill all of those requirements, I'm ready to support that. If, if, particularly if one could be found perhaps closer, but there is a lot of, there are a lot of advantages to the location that Mr. DiVillo has identified, and that is why I'm ready to, to support this. I'm willing to explore alternatives, but right now I'm skeptical that there's one that will exceed the advantages of the one that is on the table.
I would like to reiterate one thing that's in the letter from the Battlefield in Virginia, and that is keeping it in its current location, which, well, you know now is not an option, okay? But the second stipulation they have on there was if there's a location in Talbot County, that it must go there first. I read the letter. That is what it says. So, if there is an opportunity for it to be in Talbot County, the Battlefield or its own letter states that it should stay in Talbot County. It states that they really don't want it, if there's a place for it, in Talbot County. So, I think we owe it to the citizens of Talbot County to keep the monument in its home county.
And I assume you spoke to them and found out, to get clarification on what they were referring to?
No, because you didn't disclose your conversations with them. All I have is the letter that was presented to us at the, like about an hour before we voted on it, that none of us ever saw in advance, unfortunately. But all I have is that letter. No, I didn't speak to them, Mr. DiVillo. Maybe they should have put that in writing.
And the follow-up conversations, and since that letter was written, have you taken the opportunity to speak with them?
Conversations, no. I only take what I see in writing. That's all you've got. If you don't have it in writing, you don't have it. So, private conversations between you and the Battlefield, I don't think really was fair. I think if they had something different in mind, other than them stating that they wanted it in its current location, if that was not an option, it was to stay in Talbot County, and only then, if it couldn't stay in Talbot County, would they take it? That's what I saw in writing.
Well, I, I did speak to members of, Representative of Cross Keys and had a very pleasant conversation with them. I think they wanted to, just to make sure that things were proceeding up here, they knew about the lawsuit, they just want to make sure that the, the resolution was going to move forward. I assure them that, that it would be, and we, we heard from our county attorney earlier today that the court ruled in our favor regarding the lawsuit that was filed against the county regarding the administrative resolution, how this council proceeded. So, it, it appears that they are prepared to take the monument. They just wanted to, again, speak with me. I did speak with them about it. So, I think that, again, the resolution as it, as it's drafted, the destination, some of the points that Mr. Lesher pointed out, it is a public area. They are in the business of having these types of statues, monuments in their purview. They know how to take care of them. They know how the ground should be laid out. And so, it would be, I, I believe, a great addition to what they already have there at the Battlefield. So, with that being said, Mr. Lesher, as you laid out your, your requirements here, I don't think you're going to find any of that over the next two weeks that's going to meet those requirements. But nonetheless, Mr. Chairman, you have a, a motion, an amendment, and a second before you, so I'll, you're over the floor for your vote.
Okay. Are we flexible on the time on the 21st? Can we do the 21st?
I am not flexible on the 21st. That was not part of his, his motion, his amendment.
Mr. Lesher? Could you, could you extend it to the 21st, please?
I think, I, I, I suspect the time is of the essence in terms of the planning that is being done by, by our bidder here.
The bidder's going to tell us what to do. The bidder's going to, we're already telling the bidder what to do, so the bidder's going to be there one way or the other.
I know. It is Christmas for Pete's sake. I don't think he's going to do a whole lot that last week of December anyway.
He's not even starting to the first, first of the year.
Yeah.
No, he has to start with his planning process. Mr. Callahan, you're a builder.
He will immediately begin the plans in December to work out all of, the work plan sets, is set in the bid to begin the, the planning process for the removal immediately in December with the move, physical move in January.
Physical move?
The physical move in January with the planning, all the details for planning in December.
Okay. Madam Secretary, you want to call the vote?
This is on the amendment.
So, just to clarify, this is...
On Pete's amendment. This is on the amendment only.
Okay.
Mr. Callahan?
No.
Mr. DiVillo? Mr. Lesher? Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
No. Now, you have the motion before you as, as set forth.
Did you ca, no.
Did you want to clear, change?
I, I can clarify. I mean, so, so I can clarify my vote if I'd like. I mean, I wanted to stay here. I wanted to look at a new place.
Right, that's the amendment.
Well, you said no.
Well, I can change my vote. I can change my vote.
Do you want to change that for the record?
Yeah, I'll change it for the record to yes.
Well, it's a little confusing.
It is confusing. I want to make, it's not a matter, I want to make the right decision.
This was just...
You talked about this amendment for the last 10 minutes.
Yeah, but I, I just, I just don't trust the whole thing. It's, it's, it's in, it's in a lot of motions in a lot of ways, and I, I, I want to do what's best for this county, and I, we all know it's going to move. We all know that, Mr. Pack. I just want to, that's all.
Okay, so, so, so the amendment, the amendment passed, he changed his vote to yes, the amendment passes three to two. Okay, so, so the amendment passed. So, now you have the, now you have the matter before you as amended. Please call the vote, Madam Secretary.
Wait a minute now.
I'm pretty sure that's...
You voted on the amendment. Now you have the matter before you as amended.
I think we have, we think we have a chairman who's supposed to call the vote.
You've got the true amendment now, correct?
Yes, as amended.
Okay.
As amended.
Right.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. DiVillo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher? Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay.
So, just, just a point of clarification on the timeframe. Are, is it your expectation, counsel, that staff brings this back for your decision at the May, or the December 14th meeting, or the December 21st meeting, if you choose to have the meeting on the 21st?
According to what he said, time is of the essence. So, what I took that, what I took that as meaning, and based on your, your clarification, is that you want all bids back to you by December 6th, so you can have it in the packet by December the 14th. That's what we just voted on. Was that understanding?
Thank you.
That's what we just voted on.
Thank you. The only other item that I have under county manager report is just to announce county offices are closed on Thursday, November 25th, and Friday, November 26th in honor of Thanksgiving.
That sounds good. Okay. So, your, your... Go ahead. Go ahead. The side chief will probably come. Okay, so, what I was going to say, so, nobody's written down, does anybody out in the audience want to come up for a public comment?
Hi, I'm Ridgely Ox from Bozeman. We're raising money to move this monument. We made a pledge that taxpayers wouldn't pay for it. We just, we understand this is a complicated process. I don't care where it goes. I, I certainly think that what Mr. DiVillo has tried to do is honor it, and I think that's an important thing to do. So, if it's stuck in somebody's backyard, I'm not sure that's what we will do. I just want to say that since we're raising the money, we have a seat at this table, and we want to be part of this process, and we want to be, this to be transparent. We don't want to ask people to give money to something not quite know what it is, so...
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Mickey Tyrone, uh, from Oxford.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm concerned that, uh, in the last minute, last hour, applications to maintain the, the statue here in this county, uh, won't come anywhere near meeting the, the, the integrity that the Cross Keys Battlefield, uh, organization would offer it. Uh, placing it in, in someone's private property is seriously problematic because I don't know how they could possibly ensure, uh, its maintenance in perpetuity. Uh, that's, it's, it just, not coming up, not following through with the decision, which I think is a good decision. Mr. DeVio, you've done, I think, a fabulous job, a mature job, a serious job, in finding of the right place for that statue, which does not belong on the county courthouse lawn. Uh, I think that, you know, you know, if, if, if there is a place, it seems to me in this county, it would have been at a cemetery where some of those men are buried, the men whose names are on the, on the, the, uh, the monument. That not withstand, that, that, with that out of the question, um, then it's, it's hard, there's hardly a fitting place, place that's more fitting than a battlefield where those men fought. That is the place where those names will have the true integrity that they perhaps deserve. I, I don't believe in their cause, but if there was anything that, that, that would speak to-
Ten seconds.
-an integrity for their position and, and their effort, that would be the place for it, in, in a state that, that was the Confederacy. This was not the Confederacy. We seem to forget that sometimes.
Okay, thank, thank, thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah. Okay.
If Mr. Leisher would have read off it, or memorized a statement, please just try to keep the comments directed to the council at large.
Yeah, no problem.
Vicki Wilson Easton, I, certainly, I've, I've sat in here, you know, several times. We've had, had this conversation, and I said to myself, I'm not going to say anything. But tonight, it seemed like you had a last-minute bid to come in, past your deadline, which is a little kind of strange there, that I thought we would adhere to the deadlines, because I know Mr. DeVio took a great deal of time in researching. And then my question is, where were the folks who all of a sudden now brings in a bid, or brings in a request to, to take the statue or have some place to move it? Why weren't they doing their due diligence as Mr. DeVio was doing during that time? Because we certainly have had a long period of time. It hasn't been two weeks. It hasn't been a month. It's been a while that I think that folks would have had time to bring that forth. And as you said, if people are hesitant about showing who they are, they can't stand up and say, I'm the person who I want in my backyard, then we have, I think there's a problem. Thank you for listening. I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Ms. Wilson. Okay.
Counsel.
Jim Richardson from Clayboro.
Hey, Dr. Richardson.
Um, I have to say, I'm really disappointed in this council. To change the roles at the end of the game is not fair. We have a group of citizens who have worked very hard to get this statue out of the courthouse grounds. And now it sounds like we're kicking the can down the road again.
Not at all.
You had your chance. We had, people had years to fit this through. And now at the last minute, we're going to honor those people who somehow have a dream of putting it in their backyard. We have a, a very good location for this statue. It's, it's already there. We have someone to, who, to move it. Why complicate things? We elected you, all of you, to make decisions, and that includes hard decisions. And I realize, this is not an easy decision. But the decision was made by the, your last vote to remove that statue. And it was Mr. DeVio who found the place, thank you, Mr. DeVio, to have it relocated. And now, all of a sudden, and it doesn't really surprise me, that's why we're here tonight, that you would do something like this. Well, I'm disappointed in this council, and I wish we could just have this story over with.
Thank you, Jim Richardson. Anybody else? Okay, all right, let's move on. Um, counsel comments. Starting off with you.
With me?
Mr. DeVio.
All right. Uh, so, uh, not many know, um, all of the different boards and committees that we sit on. The Neighborhood Service Center is one that, that I sit on now. Mr. Pack has, um, been on it previously before, instrumental in it. That is one organization in town that if, if you have some extra canned goods, uh, you have some extra warm clothing, you have some extra, uh, they can't raise money until December 1st. Um, but if, that, there's a growing need in this community that have a gross income that is above their threshold to fund, and it's not a lot. These aren't people obviously making millions of dollars. These are individuals with decent careers, maybe starting out and stumble, and they're just over that threshold that they're able to receive assistance. And that's when the private donations are able to be given to them to pay the electric bills, keep the lights on. Uh, and with Dr. Griffith coming in last, or a couple weeks ago, and telling us about the 164 homeless children in our schools that have been identified, there is a need. So, um, it's got a new Facebook page that's been active, a new website that's active. If you have the opportunity to go on and like it, share it, please do. Help get the word out, because those are individuals who are in that need don't know where to go. They've never been in that position before. So please just help get the word out to help them. Thank you.
Mr. Leisher?
Uh, thank you. Just, just one note in reflecting, uh, on our proceedings this evening. This council just voted unanimously to award a bid to move the monument. That's something that I did not expect, and I think it is pretty extraordinary, and I'm pleased with it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Leisher. Mr. Pack?
That's very astute, Mr. Leisher. I did not pick that up. I guess I was so busy , uh, burling about with all the confusion here. Yes, there was a unanimous vote to move the statue. Uh, so for a point of clarification, um, the statue will be moved. Uh, the award, the bid will be awarded as, uh, um, Mr. Stamp read out. Um, if we get no location, viable location, other than the Cross Keys location, which I wholeheartedly agree, is probably the best location for this type of monument. And again, hats off to Mr. DeVio for, for all of his astute, um, seeking and, and, and conversation with them. The Battlefield, again, is an appropriate place for this type of monument. Um, they have monuments from all over the country, you know, and from various states. So yes, they have monuments from, from, from North Kalana of men who died fighting in North Kalana, but that monument is now at the Cross Keys location. So, um, it's nothing super unusual to have a battlefield with monuments of persons who were born in another state. It, it happens. So, um, this isn't out of the ordinary. Um, we have a bidder. Uh, the bid will be awarded. He will be notified that his, his bid has been accepted. He will start his preliminary planning process for removal of the statue. We want it done respectfully. We want it done, um, with the utmost of care, and so he needs to start working with county staff as far as how to do that. You know, do, do trees have to be trimmed? Does, you know, fencing have to be moved? And so that process will, will go underway. Um, should we not hear anything on December the 14th? We're going to proceed with the Cross Keys location. So rest assured, rest assured, that things are going to proceed as, um, as the vote indicated. So I just want you not to leave here tonight disillusioned that we did anything differently than what you came here expecting, is that the, the statue will be moved. And for the first time you heard, as Mr. Leisher pointed out, a unanimous vote to move the statue. That should be the front-page story, that this council had voted unanimously to move the Confederate statue. So, um, with that being said, um, I, I just want to, uh, say to citizens who can look at our, the county website, we have a number of vacancies, um, for our boards and committees. We, we, we can't do, and Mr. DeVio pointed out, the Neighborhood Service Center, which is a board, uh, one of the boards that he sits on. I sit on Department Social Services Board, uh, as well as the, um, TFN Board. Uh, Mr. Callahan sits on the Gulf Board, as well as the, uh, Board of Education, uh, Board. So we, we all sit on boards and committees, but we, we need you, your input, just like you're here today, your input along this process. So if you would not mind, please, looking at the county website, we have a number of openings on boards and committees that we need your help with. We need your help with. So I'm making a desperate plea to all of you to look on there, see if there's something on there that you might want to get involved with, that strikes your fancy. Contact Ms. Moran, let her know that you're interested, give her your, your name, your resume, and we'll gladly put you to work. Um, with that being said, um, again, thank you, counsel, for your vote this evening. Um, I, I'm very excited about, um, the direction that we're moving into. I want to wish everybody, staff, and everyone at home a happy, and joyous, and safe Thanksgiving. Uh, hopefully you're still getting vaccinated. We still need to promote that. We still need to promote that. So as, uh, friends and family are gathering, uh, you might want to ask the question, hey, have you had your shot? Uh, I, I know I had my booster and my flu shot both on the same day, something, I know, I was, I must have been really crazy that day. But, uh, but anyway, I'm, I, um, and say, how did, how did Varadis put? I'm, I'm fully innocuous. What, how did he put it?
In real.
In real. There you go. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pack. Ms. Price?
I think everything's been said. I just hope that everybody has a joyous and very, very happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Price. It's not to me. So, like, like, uh, it's, it's, like, like Mr. Pack said, um, you know, we all, we all tried to get to a place tonight, okay? And I'm, I'm sorry, sir, that you were disappointed in, in the council. Um, and, and, you know, you, you're right, it is a tough job up here, okay? But we're making very, very crucial decisions, and, you know, we, we voted on the, Laura and I voted against moving that statue. So I, that's, that's number one. I want to make sure we understand that. Um, number two is, we tried to create a situation to keep it here, okay? So that's the reason we voted the way we did, okay? So you can think what you want, um, but, you know, hey, it's over, it's done with. These, the, the people that maybe have a place for it, they got another couple weeks to go ahead and, uh, you know, see what that's all about. And all we tried to do is create a situation to try to please everybody and keep it here. That's always our only deal.
All about compromise.
It's all about compromise, exactly. You know? So that, that's where we went with it, okay? And Mr. Pack, I know you're smiling, but you did bend the rules, and you let us amend the resolution, you let us amend-
I didn't bend the rule.
Yeah, you did. Yeah, you did, because you jumped at the gate first, and you wanted to do it.
That was a legal amendment made, a amendment was second. I'm just following, I'm just proceeding, Mr. President. That's just procedurally how it's done.
But Mr. Mr. Leisher, President Leisher, Vice President Leisher, got us through it, okay? And I appreciate that.
That is a procedurally how it's done.
Okay, that's fine. So we, we got, we all got through it. That, I appreciate it. Um, I was supposed to do this in about an hour and 15 minutes, sorry. But now, now, I'm over, so. Other than that, Mr. DeVio?
The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, December 14th, beginning at 6:00 PM. The council will be convening in a work session at 4:00 PM with planning and zoning to discuss their strategic planning efforts. The work session is open to the public and will be held in the Bradley Meeting Room. The council will adjourn in a closed session to discuss real estate, legal, and personnel matters as listed on the statement of closing for that meeting. My stomach got upset here, sorry. On Monday, December 13th, from 5 till 7, the council will continue the public hearing on Resolution Number 308, the purpose of which is solely for the petitioner, Daniel Watson, to complete his presentation to the council. All other public comments on Resolution Number 308 will be received during the December 14th portion of the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeVio.
With that, I will make a-
Make a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all right. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Leisher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.